She's ready.
Overthorpe Chatham.
I didn't see my grandson and my nephew.
We've sent it out, who showed up? They showing up late?
Or did they know, because nobody told you?
Yeah, I sent it out, we sent it out to all parents.
It must be just the eighth grader.
The seventh, all of them.
Manager, you ready? Mr. Clerk, if you please, call a roll.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. May everyone's attention, please. Mayor Van Johnson.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem and District Five Alderwoman, Dr. Estella Edwards Shabazz.
Present.
Chairman and District Four Alderman, Nick Palumbo.
Present.
Vice Chair and District Three Alderwoman, Linda Wilder-Bryan.
Happy Holidays, let's go.
Post One at Large Alderwoman Carolyn H. Bell.
Present.
I hear her, where'd she go?
Right there.
Oh. Post Two Alderwoman Alicia Miller-Blakely.
Present.
Post One or District One Alderwoman Bernetta B. Lanier.
Present.
District Two Alderman Dietrich Leggett.
Here.
And District Six Alderman Curtis Purtee.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. All rise. I call this meeting of the Savannah City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, November the 26th, 2024. The time is 2:02 PM. We want to thank everyone joining us, not only here in our temporary home, but also across our various digital platforms. We have a lot to be thankful for during this Thanksgiving season, and we're certainly thankful for all of you. We will, today's invicator is, who, okay. Well, today's invicator will be introduced by Alderman Post Two Alicia Miller-Blakely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our invicator for this afternoon has distinguished herself in 1976 by becoming the first African-American female for the city of Savannah. She has served local government in numerous capacities and retired in 2011 as Central Services Director after 38 years. She is a native of Selma, North Carolina, and a product of the public school system, graduating in 1967 as valedictorian. She received a BS degree in mathematics from Shaw University, an MPA from the University of Georgia, and a master's in divinity and Christian education from Shaw University. She completed postgraduate work at Harvard University, Kennedy School of Government, and at Georgetown University. She has taught several courses in the graduate program in public administration at Savannah State University and has conducted numerous workshops on problem-solving, strategic planning, and budgeting. Over the years, she has committed her life to service to the Savannah community and the state of Georgia. She has coordinated numerous tutorial programs, mentoring programs, and summer camps in the local community. In 1998, she became chairman of the Board of the United Way of Coastal Empire, a first for an African-American in the agency's history. She served on the Governor's Children and Youth Coordinating Council for 12 years. For several years, she produced the United College, the United Negro College Fund's annual telethon, which benefits education for historically black universities and colleges. She is a past president of Gamma Sigma Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority and is a member of the Link Savannah Chapter. She was named Savannah's 2024 Woman of the Year by United Way of the Coastal Empire. She was also selected to the Board of WIMAGE, Women in Municipal Government, just two weeks ago of the National League of Cities. She has been extremely active in the gospel music industry, where she has served as co-chair of the Women's Division of the Gospel Music Workshop of America, a member of the Board of Bobby Jones Gospel and one of the show's co-hosts. As business manager of the Georgia Mass Choir, she assisted in coordinating the appearance of the choir in the filming and appearance of Touchstone Pictures, The Preacher's Wife, starring Whitney Houston and Denzel Washington. She served on city council as Mayor Pro Tem and Alderwoman at Large, 2012 to 2019. In this capacity, she spearheaded the inaugural Summer 500, a national award-winning summer internship program for high school juniors and seniors, and worked with the mayor at that time on workforce development initiatives, blight elimination of affordable housing, and early education reform. She is a certified executive leadership coach and has conducted organizational consulting in leadership development, diversity, equity, and inclusion. She believes to whom much is given, much is required. Her personal motto is, "I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me." She is also my Post One at Large, none other than Ms. Carolyn Evelyn Hodges Bell.
Let us pray. This is the day that the Lord hath made. I will rejoice and be glad in it. Lord, we thank you for another gathering. We heard you saying your word. If my people, who are called by my name, will humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven. I will forgive their sins, I will hear their prayers, and I will heal the land. God, we are coming today, as we approach this season of Thanksgiving, asking that you heal the land. We ask that you bless this gathering and down on this mayor and this council wisdom and understanding as they attempt to seek to set policy for the city of Savannah. God bless us. We thank you for hearing you this morning, during our inspirational Bible study this morning. We thank you for hearing you say that we don't have to fear anything. You'd let us know that we could cast our fears on you, our cares on you, for you care about us. And God, we're asking in the precious and the almighty name of Jesus that you bless these your people. Bless us as we set policy, as we approach this Thanksgiving season. Somebody is hurting. But God, we ask that you relieve the fears and the pain that brings, that comes from sad memories or whatever is on the hearts and minds of people. Now bless us as we go forth. This is our prayer in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Amen. We will now honor our country. Our pleasurable legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before you have a seat, I'm going to ask your indulgence. We lost our Commissioner of the Department of Labor this week. Bruce Thompson passed away at 59 years old, just months after being diagnosed with pancreatic cancer. And so I'm going to ask if we would just take a moment for a moment of silence to honor his legacy and memory. May his memory be a blessing. Thank you very much. Thank you, Alderwoman Bell.
Mr. Mayor, you ready?
For your invocation, and we appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, you ready?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Alderman Leggett.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I make a motion that we adopt the regular meeting agenda for November 26th, 2024.
Second.
Then probably move in second that we adopt the regular meeting agenda for November the 26th, although we will have some items that will be continued. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Item number two and number three. I would like to, and also items number four. I would like to make the motion for the approval of the minutes for the work session and city manager's briefing held on November 7th, 2024, at 11 o'clock AM.
Second.
Then probably move in second that we approve the minutes for the work session, city manager's briefing, held on November 7th at 11 AM. You've heard the motion. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Items number three.
Item number three.
Three and four. I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes for the special meeting show cause hearing held on November 7th, 2024, at 12:30 PM. And item number four. I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held November 7th, 2024, at 2 o'clock PM.
Second motion.
And probably move in second that we approve the minutes for the special meeting show cause hearing held on November the 7th, 2024, at 12:30 PM. And approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held on November the 7th, 2024, at 2 o'clock PM. You've heard the motion. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Come on, get it, get it.
I'm going to take a moment of personal privilege. Alderman Leggett, if you would join me. I've heard this so much that we just need to go ahead and deal with it. I think we got some champions in the house. I think we have some champions. That was really weak for me. Go ahead, give it to me, give it to me, come on. Here it is. There we are. Ladies and gentlemen, Coach Derek Perry, Coach Alderman, the, now, I'll talk about that in a minute. Coach Alderman Dietrich Leggett, who was on the phone in Tampa. I don't know how you coach from a phone in Tampa. And the 2024 Savannah Chatham County Public Schools, Middle School Football City Champions, the Oglethorpe Titans.
I would like to thank, thank everyone here today for the opportunity to recognize these fine young men. Without them, Dietrich and I can't do what we love to do. These are great young men. They completed, and this is Oglethorpe's sixth championship in the 12 years that I've been there. They were undefeated. They didn't give up their first touchdown this season until 32 seconds left to go in the championship game. We almost got there. So we just want to be humble. We want to keep doing what we're doing. And again, we can't do what we do without these great young men. Thank y'all, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Oh, Lord.
Mr. Mayor, before they leave.
Well, as a championship coach that I am, we want to definitely say thank you to the parents who allow us to allow us to coach, coach and mentor their young people. It's been a, it's been a mission. And also, we had an opportunity to coach Daphne Williams' son and a couple of other young men who affiliated with the city. So we're definitely appreciative of the opportunity that we were able to send young men throughout our district. So when you look at the teams that go to our district and go and represent the state, they start off as Titans. But before they start off as Titans, they start off in the Savannah youth programs on the park. So thank you to Chief Young and her team, to Coach Perry and the Titans, and definitely to city council.
Come on, do it.
These some big old boys. I don't know what y'all feet in them. And they're in middle school?
Yes, sir.
So they're still growing. Wow. We refuse to accept the narrative that all our young men out there doing bad things.
That's right.
That's right.
You know, we create and continue to create great young men. But more importantly, from what I understand, these are not only great athletes, they're great students. And we know that is required to be able to play. So Coach, thank you. I still want to know what Coach Leggett is coaching, because again, he was on the phone out of town with us. So I don't know how he was coaching, you know. I hope he don't get a ring or something, because but we want these young men to give you names and your grades, what grade you're in. Y'all mind doing that? All right, you, can you do that for me? All right, I'll hold the trophy. I'll just hold it. Because I know you will want me to. That's quarterback.
My name is Benari Mills. I'm in the eighth grade.
You a quarterback?
Yes, sir.
QB?
Mason Pratt, eighth grade wide receiver.
That's right. Come on.
Ah, he was eighth grade running back.
All right.
Antoine Skeet, eighth grade wide receiver.
How he get a helmet on his head?
Kayden Hampton, seventh grade running back.
All right. Super net.
Eric Washington, Titan.
Eighth grade.
Eighth grade, eighth grade.
Eighth grade.
Jalen Jordan, eighth grade receiver.
Mellicott Golden Reedy, wide receiver in the corner.
Come on.
Jerome Roundtree, D and a D taco.
Yeah. Right. Yeah.
Mayor Johnson, strong safety. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you, sir.
Mayor Johnson.
I want to go ahead and get it done now. Are you repeating next year? How many of y'all eighth graders?
I think we've only got one seventh grader in the group. This is the future right here, sir.
So what you, all right, I'm going to give it to you. What you going to do? You going to bring this back next year for us? All right, he's, all right, he'll do it.
Mayor Johnson.
Alderwoman Miller-Blakely.
Coach Perry.
Yes, ma'am.
My grandson Capri and my nephew Ethan both play on y'all team.
Yes. Well, and those are, those are two great players that helped us out a lot this year. We're 33 strong. Unfortunately, because of the break, our attendance is slight. But yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
We're going to have to hear this for a whole year.
I know, I know.
Boys, we are.
Don't say that louder. Say that louder and stronger. Thank you.
We are. We are.
Y'all leaving somebody?
A coach, they say come, take Coach Leggett with you.
Take him. You're going to be talking about this the rest of the meeting.
All right. Well, thank you. Coach Alderman Leggett, thank you. You know, certainly time and love is an action word. And so thank you for putting in the time. And I know it's somewhat challenging always. So thank you very much. We also have an appearance by the Homeless Authority, where I am proclaiming, or jointly proclaiming, November is Homelessness Awareness Month.
Yeah.
Mr. Manager? Anyone from the Homeless Authority?
Kurt, Linda.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
All right.
The proclamation reads as follows, and this is a joint proclamation of Chatham County and the city of Savannah declaring November 2024 as Homelessness Awareness Month. Whereas homelessness is a challenge that has existed in Chatham County and the city of Savannah across the state and throughout the nation for many decades, impacting the lives of individuals, families, many of whom come from our own neighborhoods. And whereas Chatham County and the city of Savannah partners with numerous public and private agencies to develop solutions to homelessness that truly address the underlying causes for each individual who finds himself or herself unhoused, homeless. And whereas we recognize that many of those living on the streets are people from our own communities who fell onto hard times or endured other difficult situations that led them to experience homelessness, and that it often takes the strength of a whole community to help them regain hope and independence. And whereas it is important to educate the public about the many reasons people are homeless, including the shortage of available affordable housing for the very low income, low income and moderate income residents, and to encourage support for homeless service providers as well as community service opportunities through mentoring and relationship building. And whereas people experiencing unsheltered homelessness, those sleeping outside or places not meant for human habitation, may be at risk for poor health conditions. Lack of housing contributes to poor physical and mental health outcomes, and continued, and connections to permanent housing for people experiencing homelessness will continue to be a priority. And whereas on November the 8th, 2024, the Savannah-Chatham Interagency on Homelessness Board of Directors adopted a five-year strategic plan to make homelessness rare, brief, and nonrecurring in Chatham County. And whereas the impacts of homelessness affect neighborhoods, businesses, the quality of life of residents, and the sense of safety for all members of our community. And whereas the people of Chatham County and the city of Savannah recognize that homelessness continues to be a complex problem for hundreds of individuals and families in the region, and that we as a community cannot sit idly by as long as this struggle continues. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the County Commissioner of Chatham County and the City Council of the city of Savannah hereby joins in the recognition of Homelessness Awareness Month and encourages all citizens to be aware that many people do not have housing and need support from residents as well as public and private service agencies. And so this is signed by Chester Ellis, Chairman of Board of Commissioners, and attested to as well by Van Johnson, Mayor of the city of Savannah. So thank you very much, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager, you want to say something?
I'll be happy. Thank you. Obviously, a really important issue for our community and others. And I'll recognize the members of the city council who serve on the Homeless Authority Board, Alderwoman Linda Wilder-Bryan, Alderman Curtis Purtee. Though I know that homelessness is an issue for everyone on city council. We have the Executive Director of our Interagency Council on Homelessness, Stephanie Capel, Capel with us. This proclamation was brought to us by the Homeless Authority and their Executive Director, Mrs. Jen DeLong. And I would be, also have to thank some of our partners who are also in the room, but maybe for other reasons. Our Chamber of Commerce is with us. And of course, all of Team Savannah and all of our partners who work on this issue every day. The ICH did adopt a five-year strategic plan, and the first plan that we've had in Savannah-Chatham County to make homelessness rare, brief, and nonrecurring, and to address some of the safety and health issues that exist in communities where they're living without infrastructure. So very proud of that, and thanks for the leadership of this council. And for everyone in Chatham County who's concerned about this issue and wants to be a part of the solution, please visit the Interagency on Councilness on homelessness website, as well as the Homelessness Authority, and see how you can get engaged in the solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We say that Savannah is going to be a safe environment to a healthy and economically thriving community for all of its citizens. And we'll go ahead and ask our friends to come up. Yes. As we continue to know better, we continue to do better. In being a kind community and understanding where people are, we recognize that we don't understand sometimes. There are many of us. And as I approach the anniversary of my dad's passing, understand very clearly now what it's like to be a caregiver. Many of us find ourselves in the position where life changes. And for me, I became the parent of my parents. And as you say, if you live long enough, you will hopefully be fortunate enough to care for your parents. And we have employees, and we have people in our city that are not only caring for their parents, caring for siblings, caring for their children. And it is officially a thing. We need to continue to be a more just and caring community, continue to find ways to be more understanding of those who are caring for people. Sometimes it's just the least they can do just to get up and come to work after being up all night long. And this city, this government, Mr. Manager, will be the type of government that recognizes and understands that our employees are whole people. And we're going to care. We're going to insist that our employees care. We're going to be understanding. We're going to show grace. We're going to show compassion, and we're going to show love. And so in recognizing, as I went through what I was going through with a parent that was living away, I really became much more in tune to individuals who were addressing these issues every day. And I will tell you that the Adele Caregiving Institute is a great resource in our community. And I will tell you from a personal standpoint what a wonderful resource they have been for me and my family, even virtually, in helping us to navigate the final walk of my dad. So I have a proclamation there that says, whereas caregivers play a vital role in the lives of millions of Americans by providing essential support, comfort, and care to loved ones who are aging, ill, living with disabilities, often a great personal and financial sacrifice. And whereas Savannah is a community that values compassion, selflessness, and the strength of family and community ties, all of which are embodied by the tireless efforts of caregivers who dedicate their time and energy to improving the quality of life for others. And whereas the physical, emotional, and financial demands placed on caregivers can be overwhelming, highlighting the critical need for community awareness, resources, and support to help them balance their responsibilities and maintain their well-being. And whereas National Caregivers Month serves as a time to recognize, honor, and raise awareness to the invaluable contributions of caregivers while promoting access to resources and programs that assist them in their vital work. And whereas the city of Savannah encourages all residents to acknowledge the dedication of caregivers in our community, express gratitude for their compassion and support initiatives that enhance their ability to provide personal care. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Van R Johnson II, Mayor of the city of Savannah, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2024 as National Caregivers Month in Savannah, Georgia, and urge all citizens to join in recognizing and supporting the caregivers in our community, ensuring that they feel valued, supported, and celebrated. And witness wherever I've set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Savannah to be affixed. Quick poll question. How many of you are caregivers? Look around. Right? So I just, I just say you never know what people are going through. And sometimes the help they need is, and someone that's served in HR, sometimes people came to work just to get away from what they were going through at home. We're not going to be that type of employer, Mr. Manager. We're going to be the ones that show compassion, Mr. Grant. So. Ms. Jill, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
And come on, come on, come on. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, my name is Jill Costello. I'm a program coordinator for Hospice Savannah's Adele Caregiver Institute. And this is my coworker Marilyn Johnson. And it's a blessing. We love our jobs. It's a blessing to be invited into these families' lives at such a sacred time. And especially the mayor here. He's opened so many doors, and this is an awesome, awesome start. So I hope to get caregivers up to the front burner because they're awesome people, and they just need a hand. They need a break. So thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Jeffrey Grant, Human Resources Director for the City of Savannah. What perfect time it is. It's Thanksgiving week, and we're being thankful for our caregivers. And who we have up here is our employees, who are actually caregivers. And as the mayor said, our employees are more than just the work they do at their desks, and that there's a lot they have to balance every day. And I'm going to give credit where it's due. We have an employee named Ms. Stephanie Levert, who is not able to be with us today. I don't think she's in the audience, but she's our HR technician. And we talked about a year ago, and she shared about her journey as a caregiver. And what's unique about Ms. Stephanie is she cares for her 160-year-old grandmother, who is 107 years old this year. And she also takes care of her uncle as well. And the thing about Stephanie that really inspired me was that she balances work, she balances taking care of her grandmother. And for many of you who don't know, there's 8.2 billion people in this world. 722,000 of them are over 100 years old. In the United States, it's over 100,000. And her grandmother's name is Ms. Margaret English. And Ms. Margaret English, by that standard, is among only a small thousand of people in the world. And when I think of Stephanie and the important job that she has to take care of somebody that is not only important to her, but who is important to the world. And honestly, she inspired me about National Caregivers Month, inspired me to bring our employees up here who balance this every single day. And I'd like to just read out some of the names of the individuals that we have up here this morning. We have a token of appreciation for them. And then also, I'm just going to read a little bit of a, just a summary of what I think about National Caregivers Week, Month. We have Ms. Taphne Young, our Chief of Community Services, and she is here with us. She is a caregiver as well, too. And Taphne has shared her journey, a little bit of her journey managing it. And as you all know, she's, she's one of our top leaders in the organization, and for her to balance all of that, that's amazing. We have Jeff Parsons from Human Services, Anissa Brown from Human Services, Stephanie Levert, who is not with us today, Ms. Barbara Veoc from Human Services, Human Resources, my apologies, and she is one of my own, yes. Judy Stewart, Code Enforcement.
Yay, Judy!
Andrea Wiggins, Housing Services, Shirley Smith, Recreation and Leisure, Asley Jackson, Planning and Urban Development, Thomas Bolton, Planning and Urban Development, Tom McDonald, Development Services, Lee Frazier, Development Services, and Regina Fraser, Water Reclamation. These are not our only caregivers in Team Savannah, but these are our caregivers who worked with their service centers and wanted to represent all of our caregivers across the organization that work tirelessly every day.
Scott Butler.
And I also have Kim McBurney from the Police Department, the Chief's Office. Thank you, Kim. Mayor and Council, caregiver appreciation, oop, is there anybody else?
Natasha Butler from the park, Third District.
Natasha Butler. Come on up, come on up. Anybody else in the house, Team Savannah? Mayor and Council, caregiver appreciation is a crucial aspect of ensuring that the well-being and continued dedication of those who provide essential care and support to others. Whether they are tending to the needs of aging parents, supporting family members with disabilities, or assisting in the recovery of loved ones, caregivers often go above and beyond the call of duty, sacrificing their own time, their energy, and sometimes even financial stability to ensure the comfort and quality of life for those they care for. Yet their selfless contributions can frequently be overlooked or overvalued by society at large. Expressing genuine gratitude and appreciation for these unsung heroes is vital, not only to boosting morale within our organization, but for reinforcing the profound importance of the work that they do every day. Simple gestures, sometimes people don't know what to do, but simple gestures like cards, flowers, words of encouragement can make a world of difference for a caregiver. Letting them know that their efforts are seen, valued, and essential. Additionally, providing practical assistance such as meal deliveries, respite care, coverage for personal appointments, these are just the small things that we can do to show our appreciation for caregivers. By fostering a culture of caregiver appreciation at Team Savannah, we empower these remarkable individuals, honor their sacrifices, and ensure they have the support they need to continue making a profound difference in the lives of others as well as Team Savannah. If you all could just give all of our caregivers a hand at Team Savannah. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Jeff, I want to add to that list Stacy Ferguson, who just recently left the city to provide full-time caregiving services for her mother. And you guys need to remember her because she started 311.
She did. Mr. Mayor.
And I wanted to lift Linda Wilder-Bryant. How old is mom?
92.
92 years old, and I know she really does a great job in taking care of mom, and I know it gets very challenging sometimes, so I reserve a hug for you, too. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. I would like to also thank the City of Savannah for what Mr. Grant and Chief Young and City Manager and all of those directors who, who have the heart for those who are caregivers in the City of Savannah with your understanding when the caregivers who are a part of Team Savannah, they have to, you know, take these emergency moments to take loved ones to the doctor or just, you know, emergency, go home just for a minute just to see about the persons that they are caring about. So I just want to thank you all so much for what you do. I also lift up my, my niece's name, who is Sharon Mitchell, who is a trooper of a caregiver for her sister. Thank you all so much.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
We have one of our own, Ms. Renee Osborne, who was a caregiver for her brother-in-law. Renee, stand up, please.
And today's her birthday as well, right? Today's your birthday, right?
Today's your birthday?
Thanksgiving Day, okay. Happy early Thanksgiving birthday to you.
All right. She was a caregiver for her brother-in-law who passed away as well. So you're welcome.
I just want to say one thing for Natasha Butler. You know, like the Army, when they have MO Natasha Butler and Kareem Hill at the park, they do amazing things. We call them our elder babies, and they absolutely love her. I mean, it's just amazing to see them work. And we're going to have a Christmas party on December the 20th, if anybody want to come at the park. They get to dress up. And so thank you so much for the amazing job that you do at the park, you and Kareem and all your other caregivers. God bless you all and happy Thanksgiving to you all.
Thank you to all our caregivers and their resources to help. I think that's the most important thing. And we'll put that information out, Mrs. Zola. Their resources out there to help their people who are going through what you're going through, dealing with you, what you're dealing with. And we have a resource in our community that's willing and able to help. Thank you all so much. Happy Thanksgiving. No, we appreciate you. Finally, I'm going to ask our business partners to come up because we got something for you to do on Saturday, and that is shop.
Small business.
Shop.
Take that money.
Shop.
Let's go.
Shop.
Come on, come on.
And we want you to shop locally. We want you to shop, we want you to shop locally. I have a proclamation, and it reads, whereas Savannah, Georgia continues to celebrate our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy. And whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 34.7 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 61.1% of net new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ 45.9% of the employees in the private sector of the United States. And whereas 68 cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the United States stays in the local community, and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas 59% of the U.S. consumers aware of Small Business Saturday shopped or ate at a small independent-owned retailer, sorry, retailer, I'm sorry, or business on Small Business Saturday 2023. And whereas Savannah, Georgia supports our local small businesses that create jobs, bolster our local economy, and preserve our communities. Advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Van R. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Savannah, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 30th, on Small Business Saturday in Savannah, Georgia. And I want you to shop intentionally. I want you to shop small. I want you to shop local. And we want to celebrate Small Business Saturday, celebrating its 15th year in 2024. And then don't stop there, shop small throughout the year. So thank you all so much. We are excited and want you to come up and give your names. And one face that we do recognize that helps us support our small businesses. Who wants to be first?
Stephen Plonk with SODA, South of Duran Avenue Association, and TLC, the Tourism Leadership Council.
Go, Stephen.
Thank you.
Somi Benson-Jaja with BiLocal Savannah and Shop by Somi Studios.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm Bert Ranley with the Savannah Area Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Tiger Lily Harrington with the Creative Coast.
Tiger Lily!
Toby Brown with Savannah Downtown Business Association.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
See, all y'all get what everybody gets, where you get a proclamation, you don't get a proclamation.
Good afternoon, Maronda Lumpkin-Lotson, City of Savannah, Department of Economic Development.
Good afternoon, Leslie Cato, Small Business Assistance Corporation.
Come on now.
Thank you.
And she's behind the camera, but Mary Ann Gannon-Pappell, ACE Women's Empowerment Center. Come on, Mary Ann, come on.
Come on, come on. Woman of action. Yeah.
We appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you all so much again for us. This is selfish for us. When we support small businesses, we supporting ourselves. We know local businesses hire local, we know they spend local, so thank you all for what you do. And we're looking forward for a very, very busy, 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 busy Saturday. So everything we need in Savannah, we have right here.
That's right.
And so let's go ahead and let's spend that money. I see Dr. Zilonia in the corner hiding, but I have one for you, too. Thank you all so much.
Ray Zilonia.
Okay, let's roll. All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's, let's get moving. So a couple of things for purposes of expediency. I want to move to items number 34 through 41 on the airport agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
And that will be items number 34 through 41.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion for the approval of items number 34 through 40.
Second motion.
Second.
Forty-two. Okay. Items number 34 through 40. Item number 34, approval to participate in a co-op international golf marketing events with this Hilton Head Island Chamber of Commerce in an amount of $160,000. Item number 35, approval to contract with AxTales Painting Solutions LLC for airfield painting and rubber removal. Item number 36, approval of a design-sprint collaboration agreement with Savannah College Varton Design. Item number 37, approval to procure a VX-216TB video surveillance storage server for ICE Automation Group. Item number 38, approval to award building inspection services to Bureau Veritas North America. Item number 39, approval to execute a contract with ECS Southeast LLC for special inspections. Item number 40, approval of amendment number five to task order number four with Pond and Company for the Air Cargo Facility Project in an amount of $206,905. You've heard the motion. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving to the, following two items. Item number 41, approval of task work order number five with AECom for construct Apron Phase 1B project in the amount of $492,525. And item number 42, approval of task work order number 12 with AECom for to reconstruct and expand North Apron Project in the amount of $327,360.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to recuse myself for items number 41 and 42 for the purpose of business.
Okay, so noted. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
A move that we approve these two items parade into the record.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero with one recusal. Thank you very much. Have a good weekend at the greatest airport in the country.
Yes.
Yes. All right, moving to alcohol license hearings, we have items number eight and nine. Eight is approval of a Class C liquor beer and wine by the drink alcohol license with Sunday sales to Gretchen Home for Aloft Savannah Downtown District, a hotel located at 512 West Organthorpe Avenue, located in Albemarle District 2. Item number nine is approval of a Class C liquor beer and wine by the drink alcohol license to Gretchen Home for Fairfield Inn and Suites, Savannah Downtown Historic District, a hotel located at 135 Martha's King Jr. Boulevard. Is there any pullouts?
No, sir.
Okay, this is a public hearing regarding these two items. Does anyone have anything against either one of these items? Speak now forever hold thy peace. Going once. Going twice. Three times.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Ask that we close the hearing.
Second motion.
Then properly moved and seconded, we close the hearings. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number eight, Alderman Leggett.
Yes, sir. Ask that we approve the Class C liquor beer wine by the drink alcohol license with Sunday sales to Gretchen Home for Aloft Savannah.
Second.
Second.
Then properly moved and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number nine, Alderman Leggett.
Yes, sir. Ask that we approve the Class C liquor beer wine by the drink alcohol license with Sunday sales to Gretchen Home for Fairfield Inn and Suites, Savannah.
Second.
Then properly moved and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Go be great in two hotels in Savannah. All right, moving to item number 10. This is our first public hearing to receive comments on the 2025 proposed service program and budget as required by law. We have some names. We have opportunities for two-minute comments from speakers. We will receive those comments. We will receive those comments. Council will not offer any comments until our second hearing, which is on December the 19th. And Mr. Manager, I don't know if you have anything you want to offer before we start.
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. The, the city manager is per charter has delivered to council a proposed budget that is balanced, does not require any mileage increases nor any draws on reserves, and then allows council to make its strategic needs, desires, all based in equity.
Excuse me.
What needs to be said about a budget is that if you add in one place, you have to take away from somewhere else.
Right.
And that is one of the fundamental parts of budgeting. So that being said, I believe I only have one card, Mr. Clerk. Okay? So Trey Singleton. Okay, sir, you come and once you, once you've given your name, you'll have two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. My name is Trey Singleton. I am the executive director and founder of Urban Mentoring Academy of Savannah. I'm here to speak about the, the budget for violence reduction that is ran through the Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. I stand here as the founder and executive director of Urban Mentoring Academy of Savannah. I'm here to ask for a meeting with the 11 board members of the Violence Reduction Grant. As a two-time recipient of the grant this year, a board slash committee found it acceptable to indicate that we don't work with high-risk youth. As a recipient of previous grants, my goal was to support 15 youth between the ages of 12 and 24. By April of 2024, we had 30 youth registered. By July, we had 12 referrals from Juvenile Court of Chatham County, which we would consider high-risk. Today I ask, today I ask the council to support UMA of Savannah by enforcing those of the Violence Reduction Grant Committee to have a meeting and explain how our organization does not support high-risk youth in Savannah, Georgia, as I find it to be a slap in the face for the staff of the One's Office to dismiss obvious evidence of work and staying within the parameters of our deliverables. Right here, I'll hold in my hand a notebook full of sign-in sheets for our children over the past year, and I also hold over 30 applications of youth that come from the West Savannah, Carver Village, Clovadel, Hudson Hill, Westside area, working with Durin Middle School and about to walk into Groves and Beach High School to assist them as well. I ask the council, please set, help us set up a meeting with that council, that commission, that group, so that we can show them exactly what we've been doing over the past year, but more specifically over the past eight years in Savannah, Georgia. Two years we have been awarded funding, and we are thankful for the funding that we've received in the past, but we have a lot more work to do.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Mr. Manager, I would ask that you, you take note. I am familiar with that work. All right, Jerry Long.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Alder Persons. It's been fun today seeing all my former colleagues and friends, but today I'm here to talk about Crime Stoppers. I realize that you have a $602 million budget that consists of over 400 pages, and to look at the entire minutia and everything that's funded and is not funded is very difficult in a short period of time. So that's greatly appreciated. We, as an organization, are the only format for submitting anonymous tips that are then forwarded to local, state, and federal law enforcement. Our primary customer in this community is the Savannah Police Department. This past month, in our regular meeting, we approved two rewards for information that led to the arrest of homicide suspects, and we have previously done that for the 10 Most Wanted. I ask that you, as mayor and Alder Persons, and, and members of the staff, to please review the submission for funding for Savannah-Chatham Crime Stoppers to be included in the 2025 budget. We also did not receive any funding for the year coming. So we would like that to be reconsidered.
Thank you. Let me just, as I'm saying, Ms. Long, and I'll direct back to the city manager there where some deliverables from the current contract that have not been delivered.
We're very aware of that.
Not having an executive director, so I'm going to refer you back to the city manager.
In order to do that, we need to have funds. You're absolutely right, sir.
So Crime Stoppers have, in the past, been a very, very productive tool for the Savannah Police Department, for public safety in general. I believe that we've paid out Crime Stoppers this year $25,000. That, that's the extent of the performance reports that we've received to them, to my knowledge, to date. We do have money in the budget within the Savannah Police Department line item to continue the work that Crime Stoppers or any other organization that could do similar work can do. It's very important to public safety. We're happy to have a meeting with Crime Stoppers, understand what their staffing strategies are and plan forward from the board, so that we can assure that as we're, that, that both parties are, are coming to the table.
We absolutely understand that, and I appreciate that.
Ms. Long, we just, we, we need the deliverables. We need to have.
I absolutely understand that.
Okay, so y'all will work that out.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Good to see you again.
It's always a pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Edward Delgado. And then Artis Wood, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Edward Delgado with migrant equity Southeast, based out of Savannah, Georgia. Here, I'm here today to specifically see if, you know, council can put specific funds towards translation services. I know that the numbers probably aren't obvious somewhere posted, how many people need this service, but I do know for a fact that people do need language equity in Savannah when it comes to even stuff like the proposed budgets. You know, they're only posted in English. How are folks, you know, supposed to, to put input on this kind of things when English isn't their first language? And we would also, you know, like to thank council and mayor for taking steps such as creating the Ola Task Force, and would like to see them, you know, become more involved with community, especially, you know, with community concerns coming up here recently with a lot of immigration enforcement happening on the state level as well. So thank you all, and happy that y'all can have me here.
Thank you, Mr. State Manager.
Thank you, and we agree with the, staff agrees and the budget agrees with that testimony. Last year, we funded a language access line specific for 311, and that is active now currently. And we have funding allocated in the budget under the Department of Communications for translation services for the products that we produce in the city of Savannah.
And I believe through that Ola Task Force, we've also taken our most-used public forms, and we've had those translated as well. And also shouts out to Ms. Baker, working out of your office for the work she's done in coordinating and leading the Ola Task Force. So thank you very much. All right, any other comments regarding the budget? Going once. Going twice. This public hearing is closed. Part two is on December the 19th at 2:00 PM in this room. Under zoning hearings, I'll, let me take the latter first. Items number 12, 13, and 14, and the corresponding items of 16 and 17 have been requested by the petitioner to be continued until December the 19th. I would entertain a motion to that effect.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Ask that we continue the item until December the 19th.
Second.
Property moves in second that we continue items 12, 13, and 14, corresponding items 16 and 17, until December the 19th. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 11, petition of Joshua Yellen on behalf of Jessica Glenn for Anderson and Waters LLC for a zoning map amendment to rezone .14 acres at 1105 East Anderson Street from TR2 to traditional commercial in Aldermanic District 2. This was continued from November the 7th. Mr. Morrow, good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Edward Morrow, Director of Development Services at the MPC. So this is a petition that you all were introduced to, sorry, that was introduced to you briefly at the previous meeting, and it was requested to be continued to allow some engagement with the appropriate neighborhood association. So I'll just offer a very brief recap today. You can see the subject property on your screen right now. It is at 1105 East Anderson Street, and this is at the intersection of East Anderson Street and Waters Avenue. Subject property is outlined in yellow, and the petitioner is requesting to rezone from the traditional residential 2 zoning district to the traditional commercial 1. So as you can tell, this would go from a residential use ideally to one of a commercial nature. You can see that the future land use map is already indicating that this parcel is proposed for commercial inclusion along what is a very nicely developing Waters Avenue corridor. And so this zoning, in looking at the zoning map, it would take that red line and extend it to the right to include this property, along with many others that are already indicated for traditional commercial use. Just to show again, these are the parcels that were notified when we did our mailings to let the neighbors know that there had been a request to amend the zoning map. As of the date of the MPC hearing, there was not a point of contact available. It's staff's understanding that since that time, there has been neighborhood engagement. There is support from the aldermen, from the neighborhood, and MPC staff also did receive notification of acceptance of this request by a neighbor just today. So since that time, there has been the requested engagement. It has been positive with regard to the concerns that were expressed before. In previous discussion, there were questions about the historic status of this neighborhood, and so just to report to you all that this is actually a national historic eligible district. Just across the street, across Waters, there actually is a listed historic district. This is eligible, meaning if at some point in the future, a proposal were brought forward to make this a national historic registered district, there is enough of the architectural integrity that it could be possible. However, that has not been done, and there is not actually a local district in place to offer any protections to date. But again, this is historic eligible. You can see the home that exists on that property that is, we believe, the same home indicated on the 1916 Sanborns, so. With that, MPC staff and board have recommended approval of the request, and for your reference, there are some traditional commercial development standards listed. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Let me, quick question, Mr. Clerk. Do we hold the hearing and close the hearing? I'm trying to remember how we, how we left it.
Say it was going to be a continuation.
Right, but I didn't know whether we actually closed the hearing, because if we did, then we're not allowing any testimony.
Close that hearing, Mr. Mayor. We closed.
I believe we closed. I'll make sure. Okay, all right. So we've closed the hearing, so the only purpose of this was to make sure that we had community engagement?
Yes, sir.
And you're saying that did occur?
It did occur. We had the, there's one neighborhood association president back then. We also met with the live vote neighborhood association and the petitioner also. We all met at Holy Spirit Church.
Okay.
And also I went by and seen the property, Mr. Mayor, and as much as we want to save it, there's nothing holding that property together but some brick, and it's caved in in the first property on the corner, and the second property, there is, actually, there's no bathroom floor in that second property. So in agreeance with the, with the neighborhood association, we were moving forward.
Okay. All right, well, is there a motion?
A motion that we.
And this will be for item number 15. It'll be for number 15.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
For number 15. I have a question.
Okay. And let me, and Ms. Wood, I know that you've put down the comment, we've had the hearing already and we closed it, but I acknowledge that you did give me a card for it, okay? All right, yes, ma'am.
My, Ms. Wood, my question is, I guess this would be to Alderman Leggett.
Yes, ma'am.
Did all of the neighborhood association presidents agree with moving forward to changing this from TR, TR2 to TC1?
Yes, ma'am. We sat down, we had some debate over, we wanted to make sure we keep the property if the property was salvageable, but there was nothing that we can do about it, because right now, my question was, why is the property not marked off? Because there's nothing holding the property at any point, it can fall down.
So the property is going to be demolished?
She want to keep the property. If she can do anything to keep the property, she going to restore it all the way back to where it is, but.
But it's going to have residential, I mean, retail.
Yes. But right now, if they move anything in it, even from her architect said, if you touch anything in there, it's going to fall. So nobody is not allowed to go in there. So when I looked in there, it's just a shell.
Okay.
All right, because it's, it's being requested on first and second reading, I'm going to allow Ms. Wood to go ahead and give a two-minute statement if you like. So. And after you introduce yourself, you have two minutes, Ms. Wood.
Yes. I may have 12 seconds after that, but no more than that.
Ms. Wood.
I'm sorry that I, I understood from the.
Give your name, please, for the record.
What?
Your name for the record.
Yeah. Okay. Artis Wood, and I am chair of Scenic Chatham. Our city mission statement, Savannah will be a safe, environmentally healthy, and economically thriving community for all citizens. While we can support these goals, they seem lacking what has made Savannah such a joy to live in. Community character, which in large part comes from its unique city plan, historic homes, human-scale development, and a beautiful tree canopy. Over 50 years ago, citizen Lee Adler saved the lovely Victorian-style historic neighborhoods south of our landmark historic district with his wonderful plan to not only restore them but also help low-income residents afford to stay there. He was recognized nationally for this plan, even by the now King of England. Fast forward, land speculators see these areas as good investments now that property to the north is so expensive, and the best return comes from building commercial establishments, not maintaining the charm of residential homes. I understand that when homeowners see what looks like a good price, they're often willing to sell out. Thus, there hasn't been a lot of pushback from residents. One good compromise took place a few years ago in the Thomas Square area, when commercial activities could take place only on the corners of arterial streets, but between them, they had to stay residential. Without such protective overlays, we are destined to lose our unique collection of these neighborhoods. They are on a course of extinction unless we say no to the toxic liberties we allow commercial ventures to take. So I am speaking about the zoning, not about the house being fixed up. Please look beyond our wonderful historic districts to build and densify other parts of Savannah, such as Savannah Mall, so that investors will not kill what makes our city wonderful. This proposed zoning may look insignificant, but it is a straw that make, may well break the camel's back. Please deny the zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, ladies and gentlemen, would be your pleasure.
Got a question, because of the time. Ms. Morrow.
Yes, ma'am.
I know we probably discussed this the last time it came up, but they're requesting this change to do what with the property?
So it's staff's understanding they would like to do a mixed-use development that would have a studio of some sort on the ground floor or a non-residential use, and they would have residential uses on top.
And so the property just in the rear of that property on Waters Avenue on both sides was just rezoned here recently.
Yes, ma'am.
And is that, how does that relate to what we just did right there next to this property?
So it does generally indicate kind of an intensification of use along Waters. That project that you were mentioning at 1100 East 31st Street is an apartment building that is intended to have ground floor parking, and it will have three floors, each with, I believe, four apartments. So a total of 12 apartments on, on top of a parking area. And so I think this petitioner is intending to recombine the subject parcel of this request with the one that is already zone TC1 and likely to develop those two parcels. So you would get, you know, kind of a new mixed use on the corner with.
Is there a lane right behind that?
So just behind, I'm sorry, I don't have the screen.
Third and First Street line.
The, the red box, 1100 East 31st with the, the blue. The, the red box, 1100 East 31st, with the, the blue, kind of on the north side of it and the yellow, you can see the word "Rest" written across it. That's 1100 East 31st. So that's the, the request that you mentioned. That's where the apartment building is going to be, with the 12 units on top of pedestal parking.
Is that on the east side?
So...
Right behind it, on the east side.
Okay.
So, but on the west side, we re, did we rezone the, just across the street too? Parking lot?
Same zoning.
Parking lot.
Okay.
I'm sorry, let me go back. This might be helpful.
I'm just trying to get a picture of what we're doing here.
Let's see right now.
So right here, see right here? We rezoned that and that?
Yes.
Those two. And, so are we rezoning all of that to the TC1?
All of these would have similar zoning, yes, ma'am.
So it, it will be maybe some multi-level on, on both, on the east side and the west side? Like if we took that, say you own Anderson Traveling East, so you took a right onto Waters, so now what we're going to see is high-rise on the, on the east and the west, or just on the...
So the base zoning would permit, actually, I'm going to fast forward. These are these development standards, and actually, I cut it off. The base zoning here would permit three stories up to a height of 45 feet in this district. There has been a request for a fourth story on the parcel to the south at 1100 East 31st. I would not describe these as high-rises, no, but potentially, I mean, I guess it's fair to note, 36 feet would be the height permitted for residents in most of our residential zoning districts. So we're talking about an extension of 10 feet over what would already be permissible even for residents on any of these parcels.
And so, Mr. Josh, that means, so I'm making that right turn on the Waters. And so on the left-hand side, we're going to see maybe these three or four stories, and on the right-hand side, you said parking?
So for this project, just to be clear, because this has not been mentioned, I know that at the prior hearing, an exhibit was shown by a concerned citizen showing a four-story building. That is not us. Our proposal is for a two-story building with parking adjacent to the lane, similar in size, scale, massing to the building that's currently on the corner. We are not proposing a large building at this structure. The parcel to the south of the lane was the one that has been approved for four stories, but we're not seeking four stories. We're working with a local architect on a two-story building for this lot.
And just there west, across Waters, that was also rezoned?
Yes, ma'am. So those, every parcel around this corner of Waters and Anderson is all zoned TC2. Across the street is, is that Ramona Riley, which is TC2 and PD immediately? Thank you, Edward. I'm not sure if the mouse will work, but what you're seeing directly across the street is the parking lot for the, for the facility, for Ramona Riley. And then immediately across of Anderson is TC2. To the south of us is TC2. Everything, everything around us has been rezoned to TC2 already.
And we're going, we're asking for TC1?
Sorry, TC1, my apologies.
Well, we're TC2 now.
No, sorry. We are TN2, going to TC, sorry, we're getting our, yes.
Okay, I think I kind of got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, Mr. Yelling, right there on that corner of Anderson and Waters?
Yes, ma'am.
We have that, I think it's a three-story building?
On?
On the corner of Waters and Anderson.
Ramona Riley?
Not Ramona Riley, the ones across from there.
Old post office.
The, with the post office, right there. And then we have Ramona Riley.
And you're talking about this corner, the, the structure that you can see?
I can't...
I'm sorry if we can't see that or not.
It's like an apartment building.
So that's the building adjacent to this site, which has been condemned. And even in the photo that, I'm not sure if this will let me go through, from...
Been condemned, I think people live there, not, not this one.
Not?
No.
Diagonal across from it.
So, sorry, that is not our property then?
Right.
Correct. Diagonal is, has been rezoned already to, to TC1, the same zoning that we are requesting.
Right. Requesting TC1?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I'm, I'm just concerned, because when I ride around the city and I'm, I'm looking at Montgomery Street, I'm looking at Victory Drive, where Ann Anderson and Montgomery, where these high-rises are, so you're saying that this individual wants to change the zoning to do two stories as opposed to what I'm seeing in these other areas?
That's absolutely correct. Yes, this is not going to be a, a large-scale development as you see on Montgomery, as you see on Victory, as you see on MLK. This is going to be a small building. The plan, I believe, is for two units of residential on the upstairs, along with a studio space on the bottom.
And where's the 12 apartments? That's going to be where the parking lot is?
Yes, ma'am. Immediately to the bottom on this page that's on the screen, the lot that's directly behind us, that's, that's cleared.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. How can we, he says his intention, I know that there's a path paved with good intentions. How can we codify his intentions if, if counsel is creating, I'm hearing counsel being somewhat concerned. So if it's his intentions, how can we help to make this happen with the intentions?
Do they have to come back for NBC every, a second time? They wouldn't?
They would not, no.
We have some recommendations in that, please, Mr. Mayor.
And looking at this, I think, I'm thinking, we're looking at missing middle. We're sort of adding in some missing middle on this corner, so I'm thinking, how is this going to impact the, the residents already in place within that circle that we had? I was notified, because I do own a property in that circle, but I'm thinking about the residents, the people who plan to live there and stay there. It, how's this, and it doesn't appear to be negative or intrusive, but I was just trying to get a picture of what that corner is going to look like after we make all of these changes.
Well, going back to my point, if we approved it contingent on...
Well, I would, I would say, I think, you know, obviously, you would have the ability to put conditions on a rezoning, but I'll remind you that the, the new zoo, you know, was an attempt to streamline and make simple our zoning districts. And so I think with this, they're, they're proposing a development that would be less, less, less intense than what the zoning itself would allow by right. But I think that the question would be, even absent Mr. Yellin's, you know, proposed project that, that they and the property owners want to build, their two-story building, I think it's, counsel needs to decide whether or not, even if that building goes away in 10 or 20 years, whether or not the, the TC1 district is appropriate for that parcel, because those, those entitlements will live with that parcel, not necessarily with the, the development that might have a lifespan of 30 to 50 years.
Mr. City Manager, directly across...
You're being rickety out there.
Oh, sorry.
You were.
Apologize for that. Directly across from the particular place, Mr. Gross has some properties there. He's a nice fit for the community, I mean, for the elderly there, and he, he does a wonderful job with his projects. And so I would be remiss to not say that if we could just keep it housing, because it's already, how many? Three or four floors over across, directly across the street from it?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
And if I may, for Alderwoman Lanier, that we did receive a letter of support from the immediately adjacent neighbor, who was in support of the proposal in terms of the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
And I would like to point out another policy connection to this corridor. City Council years ago approved Enterprise and Opportunity Zone along this corridor.
We did.
There was invested, a streetscape that was completed just a few years ago in an intent to increase commercial activity, neighborhood commercial activity, not, not large-scale commercial activity, but neighborhood commercial activity as well. So I want to just kind of tie those, these two policies together.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir. And just to kind of dovetail off of what the city manager said, yes, you could limit the zoning here, but once you pass the ordinance, there is a decision that this council is making for 20, 30 years down the road. And you can't put the condition on the ordinance like you could on the zoning. And so, again, the city manager is correct, you got to not look at just this year, next year, but 20, 30 years down the road.
Thank you. All right, what is your pleasure regarding this item?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I move that the first reading be considered the second in the ordinance placed upon its passage and pass.
Second.
And probably moved in seconded, that the first reading be considered the second in the ordinance placed upon its passage and pass. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes eight to one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving to item number 18, which is approval of our 2025 revenue ordinance. This is on first reading only, so this is just for public consumption, which includes our water and sewer rates memo from 2025 to 2029, and our sanitation fund memo as well. Moving to purchasing items, items number 19 through 33.
Mr. Mayor?
If there are any, one second, ma'am. Items number 19 to 33, if there are any pullouts?
Yes, sir.
One second, ma'am.
Pullout.
Okay, which one?
31 and 32 and 33.
Okay, 31, 32, 33, any other pullouts? Okay?
If there are no more...
Alderman Leggett, you had your hand raised, sir?
No, sir. I'm just saying, no, sir, I don't have it.
Okay, go ahead.
If there are no more pullouts, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the purchasing items, items number 19 through items number 30.
Second.
Probably moved in seconded, that item number 19, authorized city manager to execute a contract for repairs of a bulldozer with Yancey Brothers in an amount not to exceed $54,634. Item number 20, authorized city manager to execute a contract for water quality analysis agreement with Savannah State, the Savannah State University, in the amount not to exceed $96,654. Item number 21, authorized city manager to execute a contract for elevator door repairs from TK Elevator, local in amount not to exceed $68,720. Does this include City Hall?
City Hall has, will be paid for later. This includes other ones, but yes, we've got a lot of elevators.
Life is rough in the hall right now, Mr. City Manager.
She's getting a, she's getting a wonderful spruce up.
Yes, she is, but those stairs ain't no joke. Item number 22, authorized city manager to execute a contract for a five-year lease agreement for a mail postage machine and software from Pitney Bowls in the amount not to exceed $113,089. Item number 23, authorized city manager to execute a contract for multi-station playground structures with game time care of Dominica Recreation Products in the amount not to exceed $1,147,692. Item number 24, authorized city manager to execute contract modification number one for sidewalk curb and cobblestone repair with Savannah River Utilities, Primary and Local, United Grounds Maintenance Services Incorporated Secondary, and Savannah Paving Company Tertiary in the amount not to exceed $1.9 million. Item number 25, authorized city manager to execute contract modification number one for survey and drafting services with Coleman Company, Primary, Local, and EMC Engineering Secondary, Local, in the amount of $125,000. Item number 26, authorized city manager to execute a contract for 140-foot forestry bucket truck with versalift care of Fouts Brothers Incorporated DBA Smyrna Truck in the amount of $182,900. Item number 27, authorized city manager to execute a contract for the upgrade of the city fueling locations at Sally Moon and Police Headquarters with Central Industries, Local, in the amount of $166,339. Item number 28, authorized city manager to execute an annual contract for the purchase of live video production and camera system for City Hall with Stagefront, Local, in the amount of $94,479. Item number 29, authorize the city manager to execute a contract to upgrade the audiovisual system with Inter Technologies in the amount not to exceed $231,218. Item number 30, authorized city manager to execute a contract for a City Hall restoration Phase 2 with CE Garbutt Construction in the amount not to exceed $1,999,508. Ladies and gentlemen, I do want to point out the number of these that have local businesses, and I'm glad that we are supporting local. You've heard the motion, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 31, authorized city manager to execute a construction contract for the Liberty City Community Parking Lot Expansion with Link Construction in the amount of $99,347. Alderwoman Shabazz.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, and also with Chief Young, I would like to thank you all so much for moving this item. It's been just a little while, and, but it's finally here, and I just wanted to amplify it for our public that the long-talked-about Liberty City Parking Lot Extension is here. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move to adopt the agenda item as written.
Second.
Probably moved in seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 32...
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Authorized city manager to execute a construction contract for Summerside Park Phase 2 with Jackson Loss Consulting Construction, Local, in the amount of $173,359.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, and this is the final phase of the Summerside Park Phase Number Two, another project that has been on the books, and I am so thankful for this administration as we are getting it done. So Summerside, the park Phase Two, this is going to include the picnic shelter with the picnic tables, a water fountain, and landscaping, we are getting it done. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt this agenda item as written. Second.
And probably moved in seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 33, authorized city manager to execute a construction contract for the New Hampstead West Modular Public Safety Facility with Jackson Loss Construction LLC, again, Local, in the amount of $3,591,375. Alderwoman Shabazz.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. This particular item, I would like for, for our city manager, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, to expound a little bit more, because what this is, on the far west of the 5th District, which is the New Hampstead area, we have been talking about and moving forward with items almost every agenda with the development of that particular area. With that development, our city manager and, and team Savannah has kept their eyes on making sure that the public is, is safe with fire and with our police department. And with this particular item, Mr. City Manager, would you please explain a little bit more in reference on what we are voting on today?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. As the city of Savannah continues to grow westward into some annexed areas, we are, we are going to need to put city services in those areas, including public safety. And the city acquired land on Highgate Boulevard for just that reason several years ago. And this contract is for the construction of some permanent facilities and permanent work, as well as two temporary modular facilities, so that we can stand up a public safety center very quickly on the site, and to bring a fire engine and a fire crew and a police substation to the area, which will lower all of our homeowners' insurance, as they will now qualify for an ISO-1 level of service when we're able to get that fire station there and be able to respond to fire calls within four minutes. $2.3 million of this contract, again, is for going to, for all permanent work, for the site work, for the storm retention ponds, for the, the garage and the garage door, for the fire apparatus. And then we'll have some modular buildings temporarily there, housing our staff. In the future, we'll come back and build a permanent structure there, and we will use those modular facilities elsewhere as we continue to build out our public safety footprint in our western expansion areas.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to move to adopt the agenda item as written. Second.
Probably moved in seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 43, authorized city manager to approve the City of Savannah's Economic Development Department to partner with the Savannah Area Chamber of Commerce and the Savannah Economic Development Authority to create and host a paid internship for a rising college senior at the Savannah State University.
The Savannah State.
And I see our CEO, Bert Bradley, here. I also see Leandra Michael from the Savannah State University. What is your pleasure regarding this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
This is so great to be happening at this time. I would like to make a motion.
I'd like to make that motion, please.
Oh, absolutely.
Go ahead, please.
Mr. Mayor, I authorize the city manager to approve the City of Savannah's Economic Development Department to partner with the Savannah... Development Department to partner with the Savannah Area Chamber of Commerce and the Savannah Economic Development Authority to create and host a paid internship for a rising college senior at Savannah.
No, no, ma'am, no, ma'am. Say it correctly.
What's that?
Say it correctly.
Okay, I forgot.
At the Savannah State University.
Okay, the.
There you go.
There you go.
Okay, all right.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let me say the Savannah State, all right? The Savannah State University, thank you very much.
I third that. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item number 44, and I want to thank the city manager and city attorney, this has been delegate, and again, thank you, Mr. Bradley, thank you, Ms. Michael, thank you, Savannah Economic Development Authority, we have to take care of the home team.
Yes.
And Savannah State is our home team.
Yes.
And so Savannah, Savannah is their campus, and Savannah State is our school.
Yes.
This is an intergovernmental agreement with Chatham County for joint improvements to Little Neck Road and orderly annexation of 668 acres off of Little Neck Road. This will be an opportunity for us to continue to grow our footprint as we need to, and to be able to provide the services that the City of Savannah is renowned for doing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
On this particular item, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, we've been talking about, a lot of conversation between city council and Chatham County Commission in reference to how our, in the west part of our city, and especially in the 5th District, where the growth is, we've been talking about areas that overlap one another with county and with the city, and especially to, wonderful word I heard you say today, Mr. City Manager, our horizontal infrastructure when talking about our roads. I would like for you, Mr. City Manager, if you would expound on, this is a good thing that we are talking about today with this intergovernmental agreement with Chatham County for joint improvements on Little Neck Road, so if you can do that, because this has really been a long conversation, it's a good thing it's happening today.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I recognize you for a motion once she gets finished.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, and I'd like to thank our city attorney for the great skill and work that he put into this IGA as well. As the city expanded and annexed into big portions of unincorporated county over the last 20 or 30 years, county-owned roads fell into disrepair, and it only hurt the residents who have lived there for generations and the residents who are moving to those areas. And we were really glad to be able to work out an agreement with our partners at Chatham County, which, and what this IGA achieves is an agreement to share in the cost of the infrastructure improvements and widening of Little Neck Road from O'Geechy to the intersection at I-95. The county will manage that project, and we will reimburse the county our share once the project is completed, and upon completion, the City of Savannah, as the road has been upgraded to our standard, will take ownership of that road and maintain that road in the future, so long as 50% of the adjacent properties have annexed into the city. There's also a provision that includes for the similar type of cost sharing for the rest of Little Neck Road from that intersection at 95 westward through the intersection of 16 into the Bloomingdale Line. That requires two bridges over two interstates and will be a hefty cost, but again, it's a cost that is best shared between the city and the county in the future, and this agreement also details the orderly annexation of, as the title says, 668 acres off Little Neck Road between the intersection of I-95 and I-16, and the IGA states that that annexation will be able to support up to 1,500 new homes in expanded neighborhoods westward, so a very good deal for both the city and the county, and especially for our residents.
Thank you so much, Mr. City Manager.
Appreciate your work and all of that. Alderman Palumbo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move for the approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Chatham County for joint improvements to Little Neck Road. Second.
And probably moved and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 45, authorized city manager to declare a surplus and available to sale to the adjoining property owner, 0.062 acre at Wellville Avenue and a 0.094 acre at Fair Street parcel they could land at a price of $63,000. Alderman Lanier.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to declare a surplus and available for sale of the property as read into the record.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 46, approval of a major subdivision, Savannah Hollins Phase 9, proposed property total 29.770 acres, will consist of 104 lots of varying lot sizes. Alderman Lanier.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of a major subdivision as read into the record.
Second.
And probably moved and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 47, approval of a major subdivision, Brookline Phase 4, located within the Brookline subdivision, which is a part of Hollins Development in North Gardney PUD. Alderman Lanier.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of a major subdivision in Brookline Phase 4 as read into the record.
Second.
And probably moved and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, that ends our agenda. I trust, I pray, and I believe that the announcements are minimal.
It will be.
Are there any announcements?
Yes.
Do you have an announcement?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
All right, on December 7th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon, we are asking that all of the Neighborhood Association presidents, the neighborhood people in the community, please join us at the Savannah Civic Center for creating a collaborative community neighborhood mini-conference. Now, let me say this, for all those individuals out there in the community, if you're complaining about things happening in your community, this is now the time for you to show up and give your input on what you want to see in your community. Also, if you have debris from the hurricane in front of your house, please call 311 so that we could come and pick it up. Also, if there's a light out in your community, please call Georgia Power to have them come and replace the light bulb in your community. Now, I'm talking about street lights, okay? And have a happy, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to thank the leader Coleman and city manager. We're going to be doing a walkthrough with all the bells and whistles, Edmira Sagrill, December 7th. Thank you so much, sir, for making that happen.
Anybody else? Want to send out condolences to the family of Ms. Frances Dunham from West Savannah, who passed away this week. She and her husband, Kenneth Dunham, were longstanding staples in the West Savannah community, and so she will certainly be missed. We just, she just buried her husband last year, I believe, so keep them in mind, so...
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that, Mr. Mayor, because she was, the couple were our class parents from first through 5th grade. They were great people.
Awesome people.
No, class parents.
Dunham, D-U-N-H-A-M. Frances Dunham. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our, anything, Mr. Manager?
Please join us Friday at 5:30 p.m. for the annual tree lighting.